Many members of the committee, I think we do have some time to work through those types of issues and we can see where we're at as we get closer to November 3rd if we need to have more discussion regarding the matter.
Excellent, any other comments? Yes?
One question you asked is would the polling workers be at risk if there was a constant stream of people coming in without masks? Current infection rates would indicate that there's a likelihood that some would come in with the virus and so I think it's quite clear that the polling workers would be at risk.
And I do know, and Debbie corrected me if I'm wrong, but in speaking with Ms. Nelson, when we did have the mail-in ballots in the June election, 67% of those also requested to receive a mailed ballot out for the November election. So we should be talking smaller numbers for the in-person voting. Debbie, did you have any additional comments on that?
Yeah, that is correct. I have purchased face shields for all the workers to wear in addition to wearing a mask, but I don't really think that they can wear a mask for 15 hours a day, you know, on Election Day. It's a long day and so I wanted to give them another option and they will be given a face shield to wear. But as far as whether or not we can require them to wear a mask and if they don't wear a mask, a voter, that is, that they wouldn't be allowed, would take away their right to vote and that's really a legal question and I don't have the answer for that.
Good point.
Are they required to wear shoes and a shirt?
Was that a rhetorical question, Mr. Weber?
Largely, but it's also a serious question because I believe that we do require them to wear shirt and shoes to come in and to vote and I don't think that we're worried about, well, we would have to, how would we enforce that? We'd have to throw everybody in jail if they didn't wear a shirt and shoes, but I don't think that stops us from making that kind of requirement.
I think it's something we can also follow up with the attorney, Mr. Gosted, as we have, like we said, have some time to work through this before we, as we get closer to the November 3rd date.
Very good.
I would agree. Any other comments or thoughts for the good of the order? Thank you, Ms. Dorsted. Item 2.2.1, presentation, face covering advocacy. Mr. Weber, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy. Let me introduce this first by noting that while the governor continues to utilize a single overarching risk level assessment for the whole state, many of us feel that this skews the data and ignores local distinctions. For instance, while Fargo was experiencing relatively high infection rates in June and July and while Bismarck and Stark County continue to experience serious infection rates, at least in terms of a seven-day rolling average, the entire state has remained under a green level of assessment. Indeed, while many point to Grand Forks County's current declining numbers, it's worth noting that according to the Harvard Global Health Institute, Grand Forks County is currently in a yellow level with more than 9.9 daily cases per 100,000 and a seven-day moving average of 6.9 cases. Perhaps most importantly, we must keep in mind that we'll soon have thousands of students returning to our community from across the country and around the world. We need to have a safe community to welcome them and we need processes in place to keep them and the rest of the community safe after their arrival. Much of the current intended strategy is dependent upon testing and certainly I'm supportive of testing. We need to recognize however that the country is already struggling with testing supplies, that we will have schools and universities all over the country trying to test large numbers at the same time and that we also have to be aware of the limited lab capacity to process all of those tests. I hope that testing can be a useful tool. We know that face covering is a useful tool, a tool that costs us very little and offers one of the best hopes for keeping us, keeping as much of the economy open as possible. And with that noted, I'd like to share quickly some quotes from Mayor Botenski's recent message regarding face coverings as an aspect of the city's efforts to support both public health and our economic future. He noted, "I wish to make long-term and sustainable decisions for our local government," and I cherry picked here, Mayor, but, so in fairness. He also wrote, "We have a tough job during this time and with the state allowing us to make local decisions, it's important that we think about long-term sustainability of our actions." And finally, he stated, "We should continue to educate on mask usage and engineer ways for proper social distancing, cleanliness, and safety." I agree with all of those comments, Mayor, and in support of those statements, I'd like to offer the following PowerPoint presentation. Next slide, please. So just on its most basic, primary route of transmission for COVID-19 is respiratory troplets. So we are exposed and we contract the virus either by being close to people or, so we can stay as far apart as possible, but also reduce the transmission by wearing masks in public, among other issues. And there was some confusion back in February and March, even April, when the CDC, the WHO were kind of sending out mixed messages. Those messages have changed since and now we know that the preponderance of evidence supports this. Next slide. So, "Public mask wearing is the most effective at stopping the spread, especially when compliance is high. The more of us that wear them, the more successful this be, this can be. The decreased transmability could substantially reduce the death toll and economic impact, while the cost of the intervention is very low. For that reason, we recommend the adoption of public cloth mask wearing as an effective form of source control in conjunction with existing hygiene, distancing, and contact tracing strategies." Next slide. So, "One of the reasons I wear a mask is not to protect me from the virus. I wear the mask in case I'm infected and I don't know it. I don't want to spread it to others. My mask protects you, your mask protects me." In this case, and the Public Health Department has already used this several times, two hairstylists who did have the virus spent at least 15 minutes with 139 clients, but everyone wore face coverings and no clients are known to be affected. I wear my mask to protect you, your mask protects me." Next slide. So, very simple, wear a mask, wash your hands, watch your distance, but of the three, the most important is wearing a mask. Next slide. So, some very simple things to be aware of, but people do wear their mask improperly. Ryan Cunningham likes to make a lot of how people wear them improperly, but there is a proper way to wear it. Some simple things, lots of information on the Internet about how to do this, how not to do this. Wash your hands before putting it on, make sure it's fitting, make sure that you can breathe. Still, you want to keep your distance while you're wearing it. Don't touch your face once it's been secured and if you do, wash your hands or use a sanitizer and wear your face covering over your mouth and your nose. I see people with it. If it's hanging from your ear, it's not working for any of us. And when and where? So, wear it when social distancing of six feet isn't maintainable. That would be in an outdoor setting. Wear it in close working conditions. Wear it in public indoor settings where you're going to be for extended periods of time. Now, if you're in a movie theater, it's actually maybe less important to wear it than if you're in council chambers where there's a lot of talking going on. We all know the case with the choir came together and that kind of propulsion of troplets extends that range far beyond the six feet. So, wear it in indoor public settings for extended period of times and grocery stores, small businesses, shopping malls, public transportation, the workplace, restaurants. And next slide. This was a part of, this was put together by two undergraduate students I had the honor of working with this summer. They were part of a larger team, a partnership with the city and Hugo's with, we've now surveyed over 1,500 individuals on mask-wearing attitudes and performed observations in Hugo's parking lots for four weeks with thousands of observations about who's wearing and who's not wearing masks. Generally speaking, women seem to be more compliant about wearing masks than men, than males, tends to be older folks more compliant. Most specifically, younger males tend to be the least compliant in terms of wearing masks. And with that, thank you very much for the time.
I was about to cut you off, Mr. Weber. That was nine minutes. Very well done.
You said 10.
Yes, excellent. Question for you, sir. Can you remind us again where this data comes from?
Sure. The bottom of those slides, there are citations on each of the bottom of those slides.
Got it. On one of the slides, it was mentioned that wearing masks is the most important of all of the...
And there's a citation there for that as well.
And I'll go and look at that, but I'm, can, off the top of your head, does that make sense? To me, washing your hands makes more sense than, is more important than wearing a mask, but I'm not a researcher. Is there, did you spend any time looking in specifically in-depth at that angle?
Well, that particular study was by two, a disease immunologist and I forget the other expertise, but areas of relevance to this. The issue with your hands has more to do with the virus being on surfaces, whereas, which is another way that we can get it. So that's why we want to disinfect classrooms after students have been in there because it isn't just in the air, it can be on surfaces. And so that's more with your hand, if you're touching things, pens that have been touched by others. But the strongest transmission is by these droplets in the air. Yeah, so that's the mask. And I'm hoping that people are washing their hands anyway, although maybe some people don't. But, so for COVID-19, new behaviors to adopt and also this reality with droplet exposure, mask wearing is, of the three, is the most important.
Anyone else have any comments? Very good information, Mr. Weber. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2.3, declaration of surplus property. A, a mobile command post trailer. B, Boston Whaler boat motor and trailer. C, a fire flash mobile burn trailer. And D, Fire Department Hurst and Phoenix Rescue Tools. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. President Sandy, members of the council, what you have before you is four items that the Fire Department is requesting approval to surplus and dispose of. All of these items have either been replaced or have reached the end of their service life or both. The four items being a mobile command post trailer that was acquired by Emergency Management, it's a 1993 model, a boat, a Boston Whaler boat that's 45-plus years old that was replaced prior to the flood this spring by a Rescue One Connector boat. The mobile flash trailer is probably the biggest item on the list that was acquired prior to the construction of the Public Safety Center and the training facility that's out there. Since that facility's been built, that trailer has no longer been used and it's quite costly to maintain and we don't ever foresee using it. And the last is some extrication tools that are well over 25 years old that have been replaced as well.
Any comments or concerns about surplusing?
One final note, as we've been working closely with finance to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed when we dispose of this because some of it is grant-funded when it was purchased.
Perfect. Mr. Weber moves, we surplus these materials, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Item 2.4, bid award for Project 8241.2020 Columbia Road overpass repairs. Mr. Crinko, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. We have not yet opened bids for this project. We are anticipating opening bids this upcoming Thursday, at which point in time we'll be updating the staff report for City Council. Staff's recommendation at this point in time is to move this along to City Council.
And what's the alternative?
We...
Close the bridge? All right. Moved by Weigl, second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 2.5, cost participation maintenance agreement for Project 8068, shared use path on Columbia Road from 40th to 47th Avenue South. Mr. Crinko.
Thank you, President Sandy. This is their standard agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation for use of federal funds for this project. Project itself is a shared use path on Columbia Road from 40th to 47th Avenue South with about $290,000 worth of federal funding on an 80/20 basis. Staff is recommending approving the cost participation and maintenance agreement.
Any comments? Mr. Crinko, I think it's completely crazy that we're spending $80,000 to have an engineering consultant help us with a sidewalk. And I know that that's not your issue and it's not the City of Grand Forks issue, it's completely related to the requirements put on us by the federal government when taking federal money for projects like this. But I think people of Grand Forks and all across the country should know how insane our federal government is putting these regulations on us because it's a sidewalk. I've poured a sidewalk. I didn't need an engineer to tell me how to do it. Needs to be four inches thick, 10 feet wide. Make sure it's flat. It's pretty simple stuff. Anyway, I think we should move this forward and in the future, hopefully we can do this sort of engineering on our own and save people some money. Any other comments? Mr. Weigl moves approval, second by Ms. Mock. Thank you. Hearing no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Crinko, item 2.6, conversion of Oxford and Princeton streets from one-way to two-way traffic.
Thank you, President Sandy. This item was originally tabled at the July 20th City Council meeting. After that meeting, we ended up sending out letters to the surrounding neighborhood requesting public input and comments. At the time that the staff report was written, we only had input from two sources. Earlier today, we did receive a couple of additional comments, which have since been posted on the website. I believe some of those comments, those comments that came in, one of which I believe was in favor of turning Oxford from a one-way to a two-way, but wanted to keep Princeton as a, as a one-way. And the other one, I believe, was a similar comment with keeping Princeton as a one-way. With that, I can answer any additional questions you may have.
Staff's recommendation, Mr. Crinko?
Staff's recommendation at this point in time is to convert those, both those streets from a one-way to a two-way. Currently, Oxford is already a two-way from University to Fifth, so that would be converting from Fifth to Sixth and then also converting Princeton from University to Sixth.
Okay. Before, yes, Mr. Weber?
What is the purpose of this conversion? I mean, the intention is to convert, but why?
So with the reconstruction of University Avenue and the realignment of Oxford, we ended up installing a traffic signal at that intersection. When we ended up installing that traffic signal at that intersection, we converted, I believe, both Centennial and Oxford from one-ways to two-ways. That first block of Oxford, when that was converted, we did not convert further north. Unfortunately, that leaves a lot of confusion and it also leaves a little bit of uncertainty, especially when we have new people coming in, circulating through the area. It can lead to some confusion. And so changing that single block over to a two-way would make sense, after which one-ways in general are typically done in pairs and the pair for Oxford was Princeton. And that's the other reason why we'll be looking at if we convert the rest of Oxford from a one-way to a two-way, why we would also be looking at converting Princeton from a one-way to a two-way.
So, because we converted one block of Oxford to a two-way, we have to convert all of the rest of Oxford to a two-way? That makes sense to me if there was a reason to convert the first block to a two-way. Why did we convert, why was it decided to convert the first block to a two-way?
I believe there were two main reasons for that. One was access to the UND parking lot that was nearby and the other was because of the installation of that traffic signal. Installing that traffic signal, allowing two-way traffic at that location provides better access at that traffic signal and smoother operations.
If I may, Mr. Weber, when you drive University, which you do often, I'm sure, the university working with city staff and planning, when they were working that corridor, trying to make it look nicer and add the amenities that UND wanted, they also wanted to increase the safety or reduce the risk because of the students who seemingly randomly walked across University all over the place. So they did a lot with putting up barriers and funneling, which led to the, which is directly, I believe, what led to the stoplight being installed there as a central location for north-south traffic of pedestrians. They wanted to make it safe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Crinko. And because of that, it made sense to make the, Oxford, if I recall, for at least that first block, two-way traffic, it actually made sense at the time. So I think this is an extension of what they were working on.
I understand everything that you said there, except I still don't understand, we can have a traffic signal with a one-way. Why does a traffic signal require that we go from a one-way to a two-way? I'm still missing that little piece of the puzzle.
Having that additional movement through there provides smoother operation at that intersection when you can allow for two-way traffic. That way then you can allow more vehicles moving through that intersection from that direction. Currently with the realignment of Oxford and I believe Princeton to the west, as that one-way pair, I'm trying to remember now. In converting that, we're allowing additional traffic to come down Oxford from that traffic signal, so it's just smoother operation, I believe.
And why would we want to do anything to increase traffic in that area? I thought the intention all along was to traffic calm and to even reduce traffic and to move that traffic over to Sixth. So why do we want to increase traffic there?
I don't think you're, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I don't think you're, the amount of traffic that's in that area is fixed. We're not, by allowing northbound for a block on Oxford, there aren't magically new cars that are going to be there, right? Because they have to come from somewhere.
Right.
Right?
But if I am restricted in my ability to move there, then I might be more inclined to stay on Sixth rather than come over to University.
Well, I suppose in looking at the various options that you may have, if you have an option to go down a two-way street and then all of a sudden you have to turn and travel down additional roads because you now are facing a one-way street, you're actually going to be spending more time traveling through the neighborhood traversing that, whereas if you convert it to a two-way, you could end up staying on that same street.
Yeah, but this still goes to converting the first block to a two-way. And I'm saying, why do we, why is that necessary? I understand if we're going to convert that first block to a two-way, then it makes sense to convert the rest of it to a two-way and then if that's two-way, then it makes sense for them to both be two-ways and it all, but it all stems at that first block. Why, why is that necessary to change, convert that first block to a two-way from the one-way?
And that boils down to the installation of that traffic signal and the smoothness of the operations at that traffic signal. Having a traffic signal installed at that location, you end up having a lot more vehicles traveling through that intersection, whether it's turning left, turning right, going through, and so it's easier to have it done at that location rather than downstream or at another uncontrolled location.
Mr. Weber, I think Mr. Weigl has a...
Please.
I think what you're do, I'm not in favor of converting Princeton. I'd be in favor of Oxford, but I think what you're doing is, I think we're comparing east-west roads to north-south roads and I think what you would do, you wouldn't increase traffic, you'd probably even out traffic from going on Harvard Street because that's a two-way road going north-south. I think people then instead of always taking Harvard Street to go north-south to get to University, they'd probably, some cars may come over to Oxford instead. So you'd probably lose traffic on Harvard and probably have an increase in traffic on Oxford, but I think it'd probably balance itself out.
Was I the, I wasn't the only one that received a number of emails in the last couple hours, I'm guessing? We've all received those, yeah. And will those be, I believe they were also directed to the mayor and to city administrator? So those will all be read into the record and then whatever recommendation we make this week will be reviewed next week at council. Yes?
And, Mr. Weber, the, those comments that we did receive, those are already uploaded onto the city's website on this agenda item.
Very good. Not been able to read them all before the meeting this evening. Thanks.
Ms. Mock, a comment?
I think in one of the comments, they did ask if potentially Oxford was changed to a two-way, but then keep Princeton as a one-way. Is that something engineering has looked at? Do you have some thoughts on that possibility?
Unfortunately, we did just receive these comments at pretty much, I believe, 4:00, 4:30 this afternoon, so we haven't had an opportunity to really look into them.
It does seem like Oxford is wider than Princeton, or is that just the way the photo looks?
I believe both Oxford and Princeton, I believe they're close to the same width.
Okay.
Overall, with converting these roads from a one-way to a two-way, we would not be looking at any removal of parking. It would just be converting one-way to two-way, so you'd be allowing traffic in two directions, maintaining parking on one side of the street.
Mr. Weigl, comment?
Just add a couple things. Like I said before, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of turning Princeton to a two-way street. I think we can say roads are the same width and we're good to go, but I think we forget about the human element. And in my nine years of working at the university, I understand people aren't very good at parking and I understand that people don't move their vehicles when it snows up the street. And I think that while it may be wide enough for a spring, fall, or summer day to get two vehicles there with still parking, I think we are going to struggle mightily through the winter and I think it's going to add to an increase of crashes. I think we're going to add to an increase of a lot of other things that maybe aren't foreseen at this time. So, like I said, if we want to take Oxford and make that because, you know, it's just another block that we're extending it, I'd be okay with that. But I think Princeton with, we have two residence halls right there, you have a fraternity right there, you have a large parking lot that many students use. I think that keeping that a one-way would be a very positive thing with as much foot traffic and traffic that we do have in that area. So, I think if we could look at that for next week, no matter how this goes, but as far as swapping both of them, that's something I wouldn't be in favor of.
Ms. Crinko, can you remind us why we tabled this on July 20th?
We originally ended up tabling this on July 20th because we had received a public comment that the neighborhood had not had an opportunity to provide input and that was part of the reason why we tabled it and then we sent out a letter to the neighborhood requesting comments and input.
But we didn't have neighborhood gathering. We didn't go to the parking lot out there and ask people to show up and provide opinions. We just asked people to send them, send us messages, which we got some today. I don't know how many, I can't remember how many messages, how many people sent notes to us? Five?
I have received a total of three.
Three? Okay, very good.
One of which was from UND as well.
One from UND, which was positive and two people that weren't excited about, one that didn't want to do either and one that was okay with Oxford, if I recall correctly. Okay. Mayor, Ms. Green?
Just one question. It looks like in your findings of fact, it says the University of North Dakota requested the change. Who's the University of North Dakota? Is there a specific apartment, a specific entity?
Unfortunately, I think that all came about in a meeting that I was not a part of. There was a discussion as to the streets in that location, so I do not have a solid answer for you on that one, unfortunately.
And maybe between now and the next, I'd like to see if the request originally came from them, there must be some other justification or explanations because beyond what we're hearing here now, I'd just like to see if we could have that be addressed, if we could.
I think there was a gentleman in the audience that wanted to speak. You're welcome to come forward and state your name and...
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Tom O'Connell. I live on the corner of Princeton and Sixth. And took a few notes here. First of all, whoever was responsible for switching Princeton to a one-way street should be way, way back, before the Wellness Center, before the Betty, and before the Ralph, should really be complimented for some really terrific work. Prior to that, I mean, that home has been in our family for, since '56 or '57. Princeton Street, prior to that, when it was a two-way street, as Danny mentioned, wintertime, being a two-way street, it was a maze to get through. When you've got traffic going both ways, cars parked, snow, cars parked farther out to the street, it was terrible. Okay? One thing that the one-way street did was when the students came to the university, left on holiday weekends, between classes, if they wanted to get out of the university area and go downtown or wherever, it kept the flow going one-way. When students came to the university and with, in the, for each session, and dropped stuff off at the dormitories, they came in from the Princeton side, once the one-way was there, and it was very orderly. They could drop their stuff off and then proceed north and get out. Let's see, what else have I got here? Going back to it, was a two-way, students coming in for class late or in a hurry would, when it was a two-way, some would come in from the north going south, others are coming in from the south, and they're looking for parking places. If there was a parking place on the east side, and they were coming from the north, guess what? Pull into somebody's driveway, then you've got traffic coming both ways, and they're trying to back out. And then you had traffic snarls. And in a two-block area there, it was, it could be a mess. And it was at various times. Let's see. Now with the Wellness Center, and the Ralph, and the Betty, and the evidence that happened there at Wellness Center and whatever, when traffic lets out, I can't imagine what it would be like with students wandering the way they do with traffic going both north and south on Princeton, plus the traffic on Sixth going east and west. That intersection, where I sit with my wife and watch TV in the evening, I have a direct view of the intersection, and I have personally called 911 for several accidents. And I've been a party to watching several, almost, not several, quite a few. And it's funny that somebody really hasn't been really hurt. One instance, when our girl was hit from our corner and flew about 15 feet, I went out to assist before the ambulance got there to stabilize her neck and head before the ambulance got there. But that was a scary, that was a scary system, event. Other than that, I would personally like to see it a one-way, because I think the traffic flow would be much better. I really do. And the one thing I do, do have one more thing is, and I mentioned it to Chief Plummer when he came on duty, that that one-way, one of the problems was a few students going the wrong way. And they did some enforcement. We still have a small minority that decide they're going to try to beat the system, but that could be taken care of, what they think. A little better signage before on not making a left turn or a right turn, depending on which direction you're coming, on Sixth, and probably a camera. But that's the only problem I see.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Appreciate you.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Crinko, any, anything else for the good of the order?
Nothing in particular. Councilmember Weigl, kind of to your point, one option you could do is you could go for a motion for changing Oxford to a two-way and then maintaining Princeton as a one-way. That might be an option or a consideration.
I think that'd be a mo, I really, I like the advancement of that traffic light at Oxford and University. I think that's going to do a lot right now, when students come back in the future during events. I think that's a great advancement, and I think that fits Oxford Street well. But I think without it at Harvard, or at Princeton, I think it's just going to be a struggle. And I know how it is at 1:00 in the morning, when some place is having a social gathering, and you've got two-way traffic on Harvard Street, and one Uber trying to get through because somebody made a responsible decision to get a ride home, and you've got cars coming both ways, it turns into a mess. It really does. I think the best thing moving forward would be keep Princeton a one-way. Oxford has the new light, and that can move to a two-way. I'd even, maybe even consider that taking parking off Oxford altogether might be an option as well. But I'll, I'll leave that up to whoever else. But I'll make a motion to move forward with Princeton as a one-way, Oxford as a two-way.
Is a motion, is there a second? Second by Weber?
Good discussion. Appreciate it.
Any other, any other comments? Hearing none, oh, yes, Ms. Mauch?
If we move forward with that, can engineering take a look at that between now and next week and just let us know if there are issues we're not thinking about right now?
Certainly.
I think to Mr. Weigl's point, if there are issues with parking this winter, we can always, you know, analyze that, have the, whether it's the university or our engineering or even North, UND PD, seeing issues can come back to us, and we can always adjust on the go, right?
Might be a great project for an engineering student at UND to study. Who knows?
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Item 2.7, Engineering Amendment Number One for Project 8066, Sanitary Sewer on South 19th Street from 40th to 44th Avenue, 44th Avenue South, yes. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Sandy, committee members. Back in May of 2019, the city entered a task order agreement with CPS to provide engineering design and inspection services for Project 8066. This project installs sanitary sewer in the Edgewood Village development between 40th and 44th Avenue South. This project has encountered a couple situations in the process of construction that has required additional engineering services, the foremost of which is the extremely wet weather we had last fall that led to very challenging conditions, soil conditions, this spring that extended our construction time. That extended construction directly led to additional inspection hours by CPS on behalf of the city. Additionally, we had one change site condition and one requested change from Thompson Homes to our design, which to a lesser extent required some additional engineering services. So tonight, we are requesting approval of Amendment Number One to the task order agreement with CPS.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veen moves approval, seconded by Ms. Mauch. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Follow-up to Item 2.7, Item 2.8, Cost Participation Reimbursement for City Project 8061-8064, Sanitary Sewer, Water Main, Storm Sewer and Stormwater Pond for Edgewood Village First Resubdivision. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you, President Sandy. This item is largely an administrative reimbursement for a city partnership, a private-public partnership with Miskigeece LLC. This project develops the, what is known as the Edgewood Village subdivision, and originally began as a private development. As a course of the development, it was determined that the planned private stormwater pond would better serve the city as a regional pond, and the city has a cost reimbursement policy or a cost share policy for such regional ponds. You may recall back in April of this year, the city council approved a city cost share of 15% for this regional pond. As a result of that decision, Mr. John Miskavich sent a request to city engineering for the commensurate city cost share for what he had invested as a private investment initially. So city engineering and finance departments reviewed his request and applying the special assessment policies of the city. We determined what the amount would be that the city would have, would have paid had this been a special assessed project. That amount is roughly $158,000. So with that, we are requesting that the city reimburse Miskigeece LLC in that amount to be distributed to funds $5,400 for stormwater, $5,300 for waterworks, and $5,200 for wastewater. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Excellent. Any, Mr. Weber? I'll move, move approval by Weber, seconded by Mr. Kavami. Excellent. Everybody needs their name in the minutes. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Nothing else on the agenda? Mr. Weber?
One quick question. You'd asked why we had tabled the Princeton-Oxford conversion. If I, if I'm recalling properly, that came from the mayor's office. They'd gotten some calls, so, so thanks for tabling that. This was a...
Yeah, I would agree, but I wasn't sure if we had gone, to what extent we had gone to solicit input from the neighbors, so I just was looking for clarification. There's a motion in the second to, is there a motion to adjourn, Mr. Weber? Yes, and Ms. Mauch, motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Good night, Kyle.
Good night.